Background information. The CS South Fulton Solid Waste Organization's number 2018-041 was adopted in October 23, 2018. Each resident is required to have a waste collection service to help an approved CS South Fulton vendor. Vendor contract directed with residents and vendors are charged an infrastructure maintenance fee of 5% of gross proceeds. Background information. Penalties. There are several penalties that residents that are not compliant with the same now for each of these. The milestone on other programs. The first quarter was for the last two months in 2018, starting November 2018. The second milestone was the first quarter report for 2019, January to March, and then April to June. The ordinance provided a grace period for all residents to contract with sanitation vendors at the February 2019. Going forward, we will be presenting to you the third quarter recommendation as we received from the providers and residents that have contracted with vendors for the third quarter of 2019, and we'll follow up with the last quarter of 2020. The implementation and numbers. Originally, in November to December 2018, we had a compliance of about 54.4%. During the first quarter of 2019, January to March, we received an increase of 2.3%, adding up to a 56.7%. For the second quarter of 2019, we received the highest increase of 4% and give us a total of 64.6% compliance for the CS South Fulton. The implementation and numbers for districts. As you can see, District 1 through 7, we have different percentages where we currently are with compliance on sanitation services. It goes from a minimum of 51.49% to after 67.6% compliance. The infrastructure fees received to date. For residential, a total of $162,651.71. And for commercial services, $76,374.91, as the total for the fourth quarter of 2018 and the first and second quarter for 2019. Response from residents. If not compliant with mail out in August 19, 2019, we have provided 20 days grace period for them to comply with sanitation services. An estimated amount of 14,000 letters were mailed out, and out of those, we received about 280 mails, mailing received, 1,526 emails received, walk-ins, 370, a good number of calls answered, over 400 calls, and we have received fruitful services over 2,000. Issues noticed and lessons learned. The many issues that we encountered on this exercise that it was that most of the haulers' database was not accurate. We are currently working with all of them, and we're going to be meeting in subsequent days with each of them to correct their databases and ensure that we have a solid database for the CS South Fulton as well as their databases. A good number of residents doing business with TNR. It was a new company that somehow the residents were not aware of the company being already a valid company doing business for the CS South Fulton. We're going to correct that item as well, and we're going to ensure that the company has fully worked for us and being in compliance with its ordinance. We also find out that there's a good number of vacant lines that the letters were mailed out. Some residents have reported that their lots are vacant as well, and significant number of addresses that fall under the HOA's which the residents are relating due to today. What we learned from there? More residents signed up after receiving the letter. Some residents see operations of my miles as a duplication of efforts. Some residents were in favor of the ordinance, and some residents requested an amendment to the ordinance. What we heard is we have different things, but those are the most common items that we receive from our residents. I take my trash to work. I'm a senior and I should be exempt. It's a vacant property. I'm sick. Can pull trash for long distance. I have issues with ADA. I'm in a big syndrome. I can't pull my trash because the buffer is from my house to the curb is over 500 feet. I take my trash to my files. I recycle all my trash. But different kind of questions from all of our residents in which we are to consider if the council wants to do some kind of amendment to the ordinance based on what we heard from our recipients. Next steps, recommendations. As stated before, we're going to meet with vendors to share issues and lessons learned. We're going to update the database and GIS maps to reflect new information. Provide findings to enforcement for action. Consider admitting ordinance to address concerns voice. Include some exceptions. Procurement options. Well, let's maintain the ordinance as it states. Development will be revised ordinance to change the sanitation services model. Revised ordinance will change the sanitation service model to provide foreseeable sanitation collection by a single vendor. With that, that's a brief summary of what we heard after the mailing of the letter, and I'll be glad to respond to any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. Also, on Willis.
So, Mr. Valenzuela, I'm not a fan of this current model, and I know we had to move to a model quickly so that we can be in compliance with the state law. However, this model, at the end of the day, we only have 35,000, approximately 35,000 residents that is going to require sanitation. So, that's not a lot of sanitation residents. And so, I do have in progress and have had in progress for since December, the single model ordinance to bring back. I want to go through it again with the attorney, and residents are asking that we do something to lower the cost of sanitation and also negotiate so that we can offer senior discounts. And we also need to be able to put in our P or response on what would happen if we have seniors who can't get their trash to curb. I do understand that we are doing well conversation-wise with this model, but it's not an overall benefit to most residents in this city. And so, my question to you is, with the single model, when you put the, bring the ordinance back and require your person to put the single model back out for RFP, and we go to the single model or zone route, single model using zones, will it be a cost impact on the city?
With regards to bringing to a new model or a single provider to the CS South Fulton, if it's feasible to do that, it will be upon us receiving directions from the council, and we definitely can act on that. We have a draft document that can address your concerns, and it will be based on an invitation to bid, which will reflect the lowest cost for the provider into the seven districts of the CS South Fulton. With regards to the cost impact to the city, it will not be, I don't believe will be an impact to the city because it will be a similar procedure that we have instead of having, at this point, six, seven providers, you don't have one single.
Okay, and the other thing is, I am still, the trash that's being, we're still experiencing a large amount of litter throughout the city, and I would love to work with the attorney to put in the RFP solicitation on what companies are willing to do some education, some education campaigns and sanitation campaigns throughout the city with residents and schools. And then also, I would like to see that we, with us having so many sanitation providers in play, it's hard for us to control the market because, and you know, rightfully so, they want to make profits as well. And so, I have been explaining to residents, until we can get to a single model where we have maybe one or two sanitation haulers in place, it kind of takes out negotiating a power way. Would you agree to that, that with having so many of these? And I'm not sure if we're providing the quality of service that we said we were going to provide because we still have a whole bunch of haulers, you know, on the streets with us having about eight vendors. And so, would you say that going to the single vendor model would limit the number of haulers on the street? It would also give the city manager an opportunity to negotiate lower costs on behalf of residents?
I believe it's going to be a good opportunity for the city, and definitely having less trucks and different routes, it makes it easy for us, and we have all the thoughts as well to ensure that the data that we present to you is more accurate. Perhaps these days, we have learned that we can request from our providers to have a GIS system, which allows that each dumpster has a tag on it, and simultaneously, we can, that will check very quickly if all routes are being served. There will be no errors on that because we'll be a GIS system collected. It will be a compromise between the city and them to ensure that that is one of the items that they must provide if they are to provide as one sanitation service.
Okay, my last question is, if we were to go to the single model, I know the solicitation would need to be on the street approximately 30 days, right?
That's correct. It has to be 30 days out, and then if we're going, if we're going to move forward, we just have to be realistic. The time that will take us to get in place the new vendor, it will be approximately, in a good time, 90 days from the day that we start advertising our solicitation.
Okay, so we advertise, it has to be on the street 30 days. By the time the procurement process complete, you add another 60 days, right?
That's right.
And then whoever the vendor is, will have to have time to order the trash cans.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. How long will that take?
I think, I'm just thinking loud, most of them have current trash cans at this point. There's not one single provider that is not aware of what the needs are.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mayor and Council, I would like to make for the record that Councilman McLeed has joined the conference call.
Okay, Mr. Yar.
I have a couple of questions. And I know you already know this simply because people with handy, with real handicaps have contacted me, especially after they receive the letters, and they were really, really concerned. What date was on the letter for them to comply?
It was mailed out, if I'm not mistaken, August 19, then it was 21 days after that for compliance.
So, there are people who are extremely elderly, who they are taken care of by their neighbors, and then the last person that contacted me is visually impaired, and people are taking care of her as well. And so, I'm hoping that very soon, we would have made a decision, and whatever decision that we make, that there is an exemption for people who have documented special needs. So, I just want to put that out there.
Yes, ma'am. It's our intention to ensure that everything that we heard, that in such those cases on ADA compliance and so on, we're going to send it to our attorney and discuss it with her, and ensure to see what can be done for exceptions under the current sanitation ordinance.
Okay, and then a couple of other things. People have contacted me about the Buffyin Trash Day, and I have been able to find it anywhere online or anywhere. Are we going to have one before December?
Yes, ma'am. The second Amity Day to recall is going to be in the fall. We are, we started to meet and see with the support of all of our providers and owners that worked on the spring Amity, and we're going to come up with the best date. We have two dates in mind, but I prefer not to say until I'm sure that the date is going to be published. But definitely, we're going to make it available to you at least 30 days ahead of time.
And the last thing is, Jacob's made a presentation during our last meeting, and they didn't go through the entire, their entire presentation, but I did read that they were working on the Keep South Fulton Beautiful, and I was wondering exactly what they're doing with that.
Actually, you know, Jacob represents us, and we're going to be all over, but anything that Jacob does, it is under representation of the CS South Fulton. So, keeping CS South Fulton Beautiful is the efforts for them to come up with a new signage that perhaps we're going to put it out. So, we're currently to say designing what kind of signs we're going to use for Keep South Fulton Beautiful. And then you will choose from four samples that will be provided to you all, and then that's what will be installed on some of the streets.
That's the extent, okay?
And as well as your communication and the support that they provide for sanitation. They're providing support to us on sanitation. You know, administrative sanitation, it's a large, just to mention to you, 14,000 residents and the number of calls that we're receiving, complaints and so on, it is a large. It was going to be impossible, to be honest with you, that the CS South Fulton, what's going to be able to take that under our current staff that we have.
So, they are stamping that wood?
They have, yes, they have provided at that time a lot of support, administrative support, as well as our sanitation rep that we have under Jacob's.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mayor Kirk at the record is set, but please have a join us. Mr. Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation. I do have a couple of questions, and I also would like to ask the city manager to probably assist with getting part of the answer. As far as compliance, where are we currently compliant with sanitation?
The current compliance is at 60.4% of late, but over 60% compliance at the second quarter of 2019. So, that means after June. So, from, we still owe you the last, the third quarter, which I expect that's going to be the higher job of the compliance, but expectation will be at least 10% higher than what we presented to you before. But the data is coming up to us this third week of, second, third week of October, and we're going to meet with all the providers to ensure that that data is at 100%, 95%, 98% accurate.
That sounds good to me, and I hear Councilwoman Willis and her concerns, I parallel, but she, you know, just said as far as having one provider, initially, I thought that that's, that was the way to go. But we put our residents through the wringer almost by going back and forth, sending these letters, trying to get them to find, you know, a service provider, making sure that they are in compliance with the listed providers that we've given them, and sending out almost threatening letters for them to sign up with somebody. And it's almost like now, if we switch it up again, it may be even more chaotic, and I don't know, because we actually have charged them to work for themselves to a certain extent. I don't quote the mayor often, but he did, he makes this comment about how if you wait on government to do everything for you, you're going to be in trouble. And I know my community and at least two other communities, Seagrove Community as well, they've started making arrangements with these providers, and they have rates that are exceptionally low. And I don't know how, if, or if you guys, as well as Mr. Kirk and Mr. City Manager, will be able to get prices as low as some of our residents that we've charged to do this already have. You know, you have some rates as low as $14 a month and some 17, and they're getting this bulk stuff that Councilwoman Gillian spoke to. You have them getting that once a month, you have them getting yard trimmings included as well as recycling, all of that included for, you know, these exceptionally low rates. And if we're not able to provide that, if we decide to go to the model which I thought would be the best model for the city, having one vendor, they're going to be right back at us. So, I guess the question to whoever can answer it is, how likely are we to get prices as low as the majority of these people we've charged to go out and try to get it for themselves?
I have to side with you, Council. I think the rates that you have now are very competitive throughout the metro, and, you know, it's an open market. It's kind of hard to believe that you're going to go much lower, because I haven't seen it below 17, $19 rates throughout the metro. So...
But again, if we did have just one service provider, is there a way to negotiate it at those starting points as low as our residents have already started, at least that rate? Given that there's so many people who aren't benefiting from, you know, those residents who have, you know, taken initiative and, you know, now they're receiving these low rates. The majority of our citizens aren't getting those same low rates. So, is there a way that we could start our process if we did go that model as low as our citizens have worked it out for themselves?
So, I think there are a couple of things to consider. Yeah, I think there are a couple of things to consider. I think the first thing is that the procurement process does require a competitive bid, which may get you a lower price than the open market, but it's not guaranteed. You don't know. The other piece is that there are improvements that can be made to the open market model that we have, that can also be incorporated into the procurement model. So, right now, we don't have zones, which makes it a little difficult to implement the service as well. So, there's an opportunity to implement zones within the current model. I think you could also look at the ordinance and include a requirement that eligible providers provide a senior discount. You could also make an improvement to where the infrastructure fee is provided or is remitted to the city off of gross collections at the end of the term, which might stop people from tacking it on top of the bill. So, there are opportunities that I think within the current model, especially with the 70% compliance rate, could help us improve it and make it easier and pass those savings on to the customer. But for simple simplicity and ease of operations, you can also incorporate the zones and some of those requirements into a procurement. So, it really comes back to what is the pleasure of the council, but I think it does not have to be one size fits all. You can adjust the current ordinance to include some of those requirements, and then it is going to take you, I think, just listening to the timeline discussed by Councilmember Willis and Mr. Valenzuela, we're looking at about a four or five month head start before you change the model. So, it gives you a little bit of time to test and perfect a little bit and make it easier now if you plan to transition down the line.
And I guess my next question was in reference to those questions that you had probably two slides back on your presentation, and you said that you moved with our direction, but I guess as such a matter of expert, I'm curious as to what concession do you see being made for those questions, like that's on, can you go back to the first question? Yeah, yeah, that's...
Go back, go forward. To the slide with the...
No, next to the end.
It's the slide with the questions with the people having the bubbles in their mouth.
Right, so you have so many of these questions, like, do you have a list of concessions? Or it would be nice if you did, you know, as opposed to ask us? That, like, that's kind of something that we would expect to hear from you as far as what could be done for some of these if we did keep a current model or whatever. Like, it would be nice to know what you recommend as opposed to asking us because that might be...
Absolutely. That is the intent. Today's presentation is to share with you what we heard and not necessarily what we're recommending at this time how we would proceed. Out of those, what we heard posted on the screen, we will come back to you and say, this is our recommendation to you all, and that will be coming forward, that will be...
Can you do that? Can you just itemize it just like these questions? Because out of every single one of these concerns, and I know that you talked about the senior discount, based off of that, I think many people just give a dollar, and they're still telling our residents that we're charging them at 5%, which is very misleading, and they won't change it in their, they won't change it in their messaging that goes out. So, we kind of have to figure something out if you understand.
So, would it be appropriate, Mayor and Council, that if, not at the, the next meeting would be too soon, but at the last meeting in October, because isn't that around the time we'll have the third quarter? So, when we do the third quarter presentation, if we highlighted some recommended updates to the ordinance that might alleviate some of these issues, would that be an appropriate response that we could bring back to the council?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll commit to doing that.
Really quickly, one thing I did here that we haven't addressed, and it may be addressed with this proposed on-mout, but there was a lot of concern about trash being out on different days of the week. So, you know, you go in any community, and, you know, one subdivision is clear, while it's another vendor, so literally, you have trash out, could be every day. And so, whatever that model, I want that to be taken into consideration, whether we do it from a zone approach where, you know, it lets you know on Tuesday, this zone is covered, Wednesday, this zone, so that we don't kind of have that situation. That was one. And I think everybody has spoken to the senior discounts, but I also think we just need to also make sure that we are promoting recycling when we can. You know, sustainability is something I know a number of us are concerned about. So, whatever that model, I do think recycling should be a factor.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so, before we were, before we became full staff, I spent a lot of time on this sanitation ordinance and even got into the operations side because we didn't have a city manager. So, I spent a lot of time before to handle Mrs. Spencer. And while one side of the city may be getting a rate of $14 to $17 an hour, that is not the rate the entire, I mean, a month, that is not the rate the entire city is getting. And yes, you may not can guarantee you, but I know for a fact that that can be done because the city was about to push that rate out to the, I mean, the county was about to push that rate out before we became... to the enti- I mean, the county was about to push that rate out before we became a city. And so, for me, I'm bringing back the ordinance, we can vote it up or we can vote it down. Uh, our residents deserve to get sanitation at an affordable, uh, rate. And that is what I'm pushing for. And I also don't like all of the trucks on the street. I also do not think we're getting quality service from all the vendors in the open market. And as far as keeps South Fulton Beautiful goes, uh, Mr. Valenzuela, this is an affiliate of a federal organization, I mean, of, of a national organization, correct? So, if we are not happy with keeps South Fulton Beautiful, which is a motto that was transitioned to the city from the county, then it's nothing stopping us from creating keeps South City of South Fulton Beautiful. So, um, I don't think we should, I think we should remain affiliated with the national organization. But I, when I have those with work for keeps South Fulton Beautiful, they need more assistance. They don't have a lot of volunteers, they don't have consistency. And I have seen in other cities where their keep beautiful organizations have consistency, they have a lot of volunteers. Savannah is one. Uh, City of Atlanta has a good keep, uh, City of Atlanta Beautiful organization. So, we may need to consider creating our own keep City of South Fulton Beautiful organization if we don't feel that we're getting the, enough service out of the keeps South Fulton Beautiful organization.
So, Councilmember, just to provide clarity, because I think that was kind of lost in translation. Jacobs doesn't directly partner with the keeps South Fulton Beautiful group. They actually have a keeps South Fulton Clean campaign. I think there was some confusion, it's not affiliated with that group. What they're doing is, I think they put up the signs, I think you took a photo with them and other council members, and it is an education campaign focused on, uh, encouraging people to curb illegal dumping, throw their, dispose of their trash appropriately, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's definitely is not a slight on the keeps South Fulton Beautiful organization. They've been great partners to the city and do a quality job. We have looked at ways to expand their capacity, but this is a slightly different piece. And I think in the initial presentation, uh, Jacobs was not aware of the keeps South Fulton Beautiful organization. And so, they just used that as a placeholder for the name of the campaign. There is no official name of the campaign and what Mr. Valenzuela was referring to is that they're gonna look at four different, let's call it, campaign options and bring it back to the council under that keeps South Fulton Clean modem. And we'll select a name and have a very public, cool process to help educate our residents.
Okay, I just don't want us to, uh, not have a relationship with the organization keeps South Fulton Beautiful. Uh, it is an affiliate, it's a national organization, they have brands that we can eventually apply for. But I, I do see where they need more help, uh, and, and we need to partner with them a little bit more. Uh, but the open mar- this open market is not working for me. I, to me, it takes, uh, the negotiating powers away. Uh, we have certain vendors that are, I feel, price gouging residents. And you are not, some people are paying twenty-five dollars a month and they're not getting both trash service put up, they're not getting tree, uh, trees, uh, trimming, pick up, they're not getting all the services. Well, when I know if we had a single vendor, everybody will be able to get that cost between fourteen and seventeen dollars a month and get all those services. And I have some price sheets, uh, for when I did, when I was working closely with the process.
Okay, Mr. Klee.
Um, okay, yeah, I, I got a couple of things. One is, I, I want to go back to something that, uh, well, I think Councilman Baker and Councilman Willis were talking about in, in regards to price. Um, I understand that Waste Industries has been purchased by GFI. And one of the things that is common in the sanitation business, and actually in lots of businesses, is to offer really, really cheap service to increase your market share when you're trying to either go public or be purchased by someone else. So, I have been warned by people familiar with these matters that it is quite possible that there will be a rate increase in January. That one of the reasons that Waste Industries' bid was so low was because they were increasing their market share, their market share in anticipation of selling themselves to other companies. So, I, I know that they might come in, you know, I think part of what happened last go around, that, that had something to do with what was going on last go around. So, I'm not sure that the prices will be the same that there will be anything like what we saw in the past because that dynamic is now gone. And, and even if we do nothing, uh, I would be interested to know, I, I'm told that those rate, uh, those rate, uh, alerts or notifications come out sometime around November or December. Um, so, I just think it would be interesting to see that. I, uh, would be interested in working with you, Councilman Willis. I have a, a couple of things that I'm interested in, um, seeing in our next R and P, should we do one? Uh, one is, uh, the flat rate to include resides on his Councilman Willis, uh, I mean, his Councilwoman Brown was saying. Um, I think if it's just one flat rate and not all of these other kind of services, people would be more inclined to use them, which benefits us, um, in the long run. I also would like to see some portion of points added and scoring. We've done a lot of work in our city to, uh, raise wages and have, like, benefits for workers. And I want to make sure that the people that we're contracting with, not only in this contract, but in all contracts, that we are giving some sort of, uh, points or consideration to companies who are willing to either match what we offer our own employees or at least try to come close, right? And so, I think having some sort of point system, like, no one might get a perfect ten points for having the same thing that we have. But if they're, I think that that should just be how, how companies treat their workers should be part of what we evaluate. And I'm told that that is possible to do. Um, the citywide model, one of the sticking points, one of the major sticking points, and I think one of the reasons that we moved away from it last year was because we couldn't commit to who was going to pay for the service. So, we had, you know, a lot of the, the bids that we got were based on the idea that we would pay for the service upfront and then get reimbursed. So, I'm also told if that is not, if we're not willing to do that, the prices this year will also not be the same as last year because whether, whether we're collecting in-house, because we're told, I guess we were told that, uh, Mr. Ferdinand would not add that to our tax bills. Um, that was not, that was not an option that we had. So, if we're collecting in-house or whether the company is collecting in-house, if we have thirty-five thousand rooftops, which was another issue that I heard from some vendors that we never gave them a clear number, was it twenty-five thousand, was it thirty-five thousand, was it thirty-two thousand? But however many tens of thousands of rooftops that we have, if Mr. Ferdinand is not doing the collection, whoever else is doing it is gonna have to hire people, uh, to chase after that. And that is gonna change what it costs to do the service. And lastly, I'll just say, um, I didn't hear any talk, I was listening on my way in from, um, on YouTube. Actually, the sound on the conference call is not that great. But, the sound on YouTube is great. I did not hear you talk about commercial, uh, sanitation collection. And I know that in several other cities, Fairburn and Hampton and some other cities, they actually, uh, get millions in franchise fees from commercial, from the commercial side that they can use for their parks or keeps South Fulton Beautiful or, like, many of these other services. So, I'm just wondering where are we in bidding out commercial services?
Uh, with regards to commercial services, uh, we have listed on the page eight of the presentation of where, uh, are our collections. And it's actually almost half of what we receive from the residential services. So, we are also monitoring that side of the business. And we're gonna bring more clarity once we meet with all our vendors. You know, one of the issues that we encounter is that there, there are multiple, um, businesses doing not necessarily a single contract with a sanitation vendor. You have a complex and then there are four, six vendors occupying the same, the same, uh, vendor. HOAs, you have a full number of HOAs under one contract through the HOA, somewhat different. So, all those things are gonna be cleaned and then it's, it's our hope to ensure that by, uh, this third week of, by the second meeting on October, so, as a compromise, we will bring more clarity and to ensure that it's residential is accurate, commercial is accurate, as well as the thirty-five thousand rooftops that we, uh, provide to you all.
Okay, uh, Mr. Klee, you tagged that, but I will come back with, come back to you after that. Uh, Mr. Klee, I'll be right back.
Um, I want to go back to what I said initially, and that was in Jacob's presentation, I saw keeps South Fulton Beautiful. And I simply wanted to know what they did and who explained it to me. You did say administrative support. I don't know what that means, but, but just put a pin in that for a second. Uh, and you said that they work under, uh, a rep for Jacobs. But the city manager said, we're not doing anything like that because this is a campaign and that's why it was in Jacob's presentation. So, that sounds like they ignite, I don't understand.
The, the reason that Jacobs put on the presentation and they had discussed it at length is because they have joined, uh, that institution. But they haven't, they haven't joined by themselves, they have joined on behalf of the CSR Fulton. So, we are part of that as well. And when you, uh, the question with regards to, uh, support, administrative support, yes, we have a, a sanitation coordinator under Jacobs' contract because they are to provide those services to the CSR Fulton. Yes, we have one, uh, a person that's, uh, just working on sanitation. But when it came to those fourteen thousand, uh, letters that we mailed out, uh, the bulk of the emails, phone calls and, uh, meetings and so on, it was more than a job that one, that was almost impossible, one person to handle. A- actually, it was Jacobs, uh, their staff, CSR Fulton's staff, it was all over. And, yes, it was...
Any of the keeps out for beautiful too? I just, I'm just asking. I'm just trying to get clear.
That, that's understand alone, the keeps, CSR Fulton.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, one thing for me, just, it's something new. Uh, probably, probably two hours to a day. You know, I think all my colleagues have really expressed everything that I would have expressed. I do go along with this, including someone at one hall. One of the same reasons why, uh, Dr. Ronald was talking about having no garbage cans in the community and stuff, that does not work. Uh, but in, in, in line with it too, with all of that, uh, I think this is one department, uh, Mr. Donald, that's going to have to be truly have an extraordinary commitment to customer service. Uh, I think Mr. Baker hit on it when he was talking about the phone and the people that are concerned that, that they heard. We're gonna have to be able to, to get back with people with an answer to their questions. A justifiable answer to their questions. Because I think a lot of my colleagues get these questions because they also hear nobody calling me back. Or that somebody told me something that, that came out not to be true. So, I think, uh, surrounding all this with extraordinary customer service will help us a lot. Right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, the next item is hotel, hotel tax presentation, five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Um, we have asked representative from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to help us understand what is needed for us to do. That is the, on the hotel motel tax revenue that we receive. What our areas, what is our duty. As you know, that last year, we received, but we didn't, uh, spend that money as required that we need to spend in the year that we have received. So, with us, we have Mr. Jackson really from Georgia Department of Community Affairs to make a presentation on hotel motel revenues.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Um, there's gonna be a lot of information in this presentation. I'm gonna move through it fairly quickly and try to focus on the specific points that, that you had mentioned about spending the same fiscal year and some of the restrictions on recipients of the promotional funds. So, to start out with that, the only section, um, for any, uh, hotel motel receipt to receive, there's gonna be three major items on top of the base rate. Two of those are remitted directly to the Department of Revenue and are not concerned with any of these restrictions I've been talking about today. This is only in regards to the eight percent excise tax that the City of South Fulton adopted recently. So, though it's been around since nineteen seventy-five, the most important topics here are gonna be, in two thousand eight, it was, um, restricted down to three authorization paragraphs. And City of South Fulton is under forty-eight thirteen fifty-one B, and that's the eight percent, which comes with a specific set of breakdowns as far as which of that money goes for promotional activities, which they goes to capital projects, and which of that money is unrestricted for the general fund. And because the City of South Fulton has already gone through this process, you already know that for the eight percent tax, anywhere from the six to eight percent tax, you have to go to the General Assembly. And now that we have received the most recent copy of the ordinance, you're completely up to date with the demands for adopting a fifty-one B eight percent tax. Our role, one thing we always say is, one, we're not an auditing enforcement agency, so we're here to answer any questions that you have. Um, we're not here for any gotcha men, we're simply, simply provide educational programs. And we're also a repository for all of your ordinances, all your reporting information. Um, and as well, we do convene the performance review board, which I'll talk more about at the close of the presentation. But as we keep track of all the, uh, keep track of all the ordinances and all the reporting figures, should there be a complaint raised against any expenditures for the hotel motel restricted portion, we're the ones to investigate and make that presentation. So, as far as discussing your jurisdictions and hotel motel tax, like I said, we can't offer legal directives and we're not an enforcement agency, but we can help with any sort of questions about the nothing bolts of the tax. Um, the first thing we're often gonna say is, consult your city attorney. Most of the spending restrictions are gonna be a local decision. And as we don't offer legal directives, we usually defer to that. The other thing we always mention is to maintain a stakeholder agreement with your DMO. Whichever the five oh one C six organization, whether that be a Chamber of Commerce or a Commission of Business Bureau, is receiving the, it's called TCT portion of the restricted funds, which I'm gonna break down here briefly. But beyond a formal MOU, which is very key to have with your DMO, to maintain an open line of contact as far as where those promotional funds are allocated towards and what specific projects they're promoting. So, these are the mechanics of the restricted spending. The first category of restricted spending is tourism, conventions and trade shows, that's TCT. So, this is defined, uh, as planning, conducting or participating in programs of information and publicity designed to attract or advertise tourism, conventions and trade shows. They don't provide any explicit examples of that, so that's why we defer to the judgment of the city attorney. City Attorney, he was ultimately the one making final decisions on that. One key thing about the TCT promotional activities is it must be expended by a destination marketing organization. So, that's gonna be a five oh one C six organization, most frequently convention at Business Bureau's, Chamber of Commerce's, sometimes Business League's. Um, but it is a private nonprofit group with IRS status five oh one C six. So, they're the only entity that can expend the TCT portion. And I'll go over what proportion of your hotel motel tax revenue is allocated towards TCT. But as well as all the restricted portions of the revenue, that TCT money must be spent or allocated in the year that it was collected. So, that's a commonality between all of the authorization paragraphs, including, uh, City of South Fulton's forty-eight thirteen fifty-one B. So, one question we receive frequently as far as eligible organizations go are DEA's or Main Street organizations. Um, DEA's, tourism authorities or other local authorities cannot receive these promotional restricted funds. They're apparently public entities, they're part of the local government, um, and they do not have that five oh one C six tax. Main Streets are a little more... Main Streets are a little more complicated. Um, if City of South Fulton has a Main Street program, if they have the five oh one C six status, they are eligible recipient. If they have five oh one C four, five oh one C three, they would not be. If they're a Department of City Government, again, it is a public entity. So if you have an organization similar to that that you'd be interested in looking at, that's a conversation that we can have on that eligibility. This just goes a little bit more into the difference between five oh one C three and C six. Frequently, there's an organization that does a lot of the same duties as a Chamber of Commerce or a Commission of Visitors Bureau. But the key aspect to this is that it has that five oh one C six tax status. So how can the TCT funds be spent? Like I said, we don't have tangible examples that are written in the code, but generally, think promotion, community-wide tourism, radio and television commercials. Again, we always have a disclaimer. It's the city attorney that's making this final decision if there's a, a project or expenditure you're unsure about. But one thing that we do know is it can be the event itself. So we get a question frequently, can we put on fireworks, concerts, et cetera? If it is the event, then it's not an eligible expenditure for the TCT promotional funds. There are some limited alternative, limited alternative, uh, entities that are eligible to receive the TCT. Those are going to include state authorities. Um, this is less frequently the case. So if you have more questions about that, definitely you can reach out to TCA. Um, the other section of restricted spending, which is, um, a portion of City of South Fulton's tax at eight percent is TPD. That's going to be your capital projects expenditures. Defined as creation or expansion of physical attractions which are available and open to the public and which improve destination field of visitors, support visitors' experience, interviews by visitors. This can be spent directly by the local government. Though it has the same restriction that it should be spent or allocated in the year that it was collected, the same fiscal year. And they do provide several different, several different examples of eligible expenditures. This is not an exhaustive list. If there are certain projects that the city wants to fund, again, consult their city attorney. You can check and see if it's one of the commission here. They do provide several explicit examples, sports stadiums, information centers, fishing preserves, just to name a few. So as far as restricted spending goes, with each percentage that you adopt, it's going to change a little bit. I originally included the five percent, which is before adopting the eight percent, which is what City of South Fulton was taxing at. And as with all authorization paragraphs, the first three pennies are unrestricted. That's in this case sixty percent of revenue that can be allocated to the general fund for any purpose. We don't need to care about it or it doesn't need to be reported to us. That is entirely separate of any of the other restrictions that's spoken about today. So I'll focus mostly on the current authorization paragraph for South Fulton. That's the eight percent. So again, we have the three pennies, which are unrestricted to the general fund. Um, we have three and a half pennies or forty-three point seven five percent that must be allocated towards, uh, or to a DMO or a five oh one C six realization for promotional activities. And that would be the eighteen point seven five or a penny and a half for TPD, those are your capital projects. And that can be spent to, by, spent by the local government itself. And as I said before, those two categories, all restricted expenditures, um, must be spent in the year that it's been collected in the fiscal year. As far as after the fiscal year goes, um, like I said, we aren't an auditing agency, but we do collect, um, forms on all the restricted expenditures. So we work with your, um, tax administrators to just keep, keep a running track. If anything is ever, we receive any questions, any complaint or anything, we verify that we have the most current ordinance that matches up with, um, matches up with the rate that the city is taxing at. And this is just some examples of the reporting requirements. Um, this form is filled out by your DMO. So when the city selects a DMO to receive this portion of the restricted funds, they will be submitting, um, this Excel file, uh, breaking down their expenditures. We are not looking at this for, uh, compliance necessarily. We're just a repository for all the records of restricted expenditures. And the last thing that we do is we facilitate the hotel motel complaint section. So this, these complaints can be filed by private citizens, someone within the government, or by hotel lobby association. Um, it can deal with funds not being spent. It can deal with, uh, entity not being eligible to receive funds. It can deal with a project that someone feels should not be funded by hotel motel funds. We do not receive these incredibly often, but we are the agency that's tasked with monitoring that. So I'll be there. Final tips and suggestions. Um, restricted spending is always percentage based. Reach out to us if you're unsure about anything. And I have the contact information up there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Glee.
Uh, we're actually, um, in receiver at Art Center. I'm wondering, can TPD funds, we have no idea what kind of maintenance it might be. Can TPD funds be used to, on maintenance for that facility?
So the TPD funds can be used for maintenance or the construction of facilities. Um, so ultimately, as people tire of hearing us say, most of those decisions are going to be one for the city attorney and the government itself. Um, but if it fits that definition that we gave for TPD, the creation or expansion of, uh, of projects that promote tourism in the area and attract visitors, um, I doesn't quote it exactly, but the maintenance of an art center, like I said, it would be a local decision, but it sounds like it could fit into that category.
Before, before I get all excited, I just do, I want to ask our city manager and CFO slash treasurer, have we already made plans for this year, whatever we have currently?
So the plan has been made for general fund and the plan has also been made that whatever restricted money is, uh, to transfer it outward, right, the chair, that is going out to support the budget that was presented by the economic government, supported by, um, introduced by the Councilman Willis. So we have two, both of them, yes.
So the money for twenty nineteen and the projected money for twenty twenty is already?
Twenty twenty, we can't talk that one, you see. We are talking about whatever meant in eighteen and nineteen. Twenty twenty is-
Okay, so the budget that we just passed for twenty twenty did not include any expenditures of anticipated revenues of hotel motel tax?
So our focus now is to, to use the money that is in our custody. The twenty twenty, that one is different. The budget that was presented was the money that is available for twenty nineteen and twenty eighteen. So we spend that one. Twenty twenty will be complete a different project.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, is there, is there any money in, in the, there's projected. I, I'm, I'm assuming there's a projection for what we're going to get in twenty twenty. Have we decided how we're going to spend that money?
So not fully. I would allow-
That's two hundred and forty thousand is projection of what we're going to. But there is no budget. Hopefully, it's the budget that the economic government, they've put in place. That one may be a continuation of that, but we don't have details expenses, only the two hundred and forty projection for twenty twenty. Okay?
Okay, Mr. Glee.
That's fine.
Okay. You have a question? Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
That ends today's, uh, what's such an agenda?
I make a motion that we, um, we need to, um, get full personnel or real estate and with the government.
Oh, you're going to do personnel later on? Or do, what do you want to?
Can we do, can we, can we do food and don't, and don't move on?
Personnel litigation and real estate.
I make a motion that we, um, adjourn for executive session to discuss real estate, personnel, and litigation.
Thank you. Probably move the second in discussion. All those in favor?
Your motion needs to be recessed.
Recessed.
I said adjourn for executive session, so recessed. I make a motion that we recess, uh, recess for executive session to discuss real estate, personnel, and litigation.
Is that correct? Did I get much?
Yeah.
Three seconds. Three seconds, yeah. You probably move the second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Uh, that's, uh-
Councilman, uh, John, Paul, and I, also.
That's Baker, here you are, around, and I with us. Okay, we got it. Mr., how did you get the votes? Did you get the vote count?
Yes.